Let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February already meeting of the zoning board of adjustments. And with that, can we have roll call?
Michael Delvecchia.
Here.
Suzanne Purley.
Here.
Roland Mayhew will be late. Ori Gibbs.
Here.
Michael Foot.
Here.
And Stephen Bogart.
Here. Okay. Staff in attendance. Do y'all want to do election of officers now or at the end of the meeting?
At the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting. Okay, so we're gonna move number five to the end of the meeting. Acceptance of the minutes. Everybody get a chance to review the minutes. Any additions, changes, anything along those lines?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as written. We have a second discussion. There are none. All those in favor. Okay. Okay, continued public hearings. We had applications that were opened up in the last minute, last meeting, and then we're gonna go ahead and start with those at the top of the agenda. So, the first one is application 0031 for a variance 16 Leighton Ave. It's a variance, applicant request a variance from Article seven, section two thirty-five dash forty-one subsection four and attachment three, table two, to create a detached accessory dwelling. Also, along with that is a special exception for the same address, sixteen Leighton Ave. Applicant is requesting a special exception from Article seven, section two thirty-five dash forty-one, and attached to table one to create a necessary dwelling. Would applicant please come forward? Oh, before I get started with that, I do want to make mention, if anybody's here for application 0033, which is a variance for one forty-five Union Ave, that has been withdrawn. So, if you're here for that one, you're invited to stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting if you wish, but we will not be hearing that one tonight. Okay, so revert, going back to application 0031, and application 0032 is applicant here. Going once, going twice.
He probably could have forgotten that there was a time change.
We could delay it and see if he shows up. Put it at the end of the agenda or something. What do you think?
If time's permitting, we can do that. So, we'll go ahead and move this, and if time's permitting, we'll go ahead and hear that one. Okay, as we are moving speedily down the agenda, the next couple, Ori, will be stepping out. So, that means we're gonna have some certain circumstances that will prevail. We go from a five-member board to a four-member board, and with a four-member board, an application is still heard, we still have a quorum, but the vote is a little different. Where with a five-person board, a three-two vote would pass. But with a four-person board, a two-two vote indicates a failure. It will not be approved if this, the motion is for approval, that is. So, I will extend an offer like I'll do at every meeting, and if the applicant for the Church Street project or the Sweetbrier Way would like to continue to next meeting, that offer will stand, but once we start, the offer is off the table and we'll continue with a four-person board.
Sweetbrier, we'd like to move.
Like to move?
To the next meeting.
Very good. Any objections from the board?
Yep.
There being none, we'll go ahead and set that up for the next meeting.
Excuse me? Is that both, Sweetbrier cases?
Yes.
Thank you.
That would be for the variance and for the, well, they're both variance. For zero zero two and zero zero one. Okay.
I've got a question regarding the Church Street proposal.
Please come up to the microphone and introduce yourself to the record.
So, my name is Jason Gedong, and I'm here for the Church Street proposal, and my question would be, if I was to present this to the board as it stands with just four members, and it doesn't pass, would that preclude me from bringing it before the board again and going through the same process?
Absolutely.
It would preclude me from doing that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why we extend this offer.
Yeah, I just wanted to see that question. Alright, I think I'll just go ahead and move forward with it anyways. I have confidence in the project, and you guys want me to just kind of roll right into it, or?
Roll right into it.
Roll right into it, okay. So, I'm here really to propose a change to the one eleven Church Street building. I was under contract for that building in December of two thousand and eighteen, and during the due diligence phase, I had discovered some, some issues with it that would, would necessitate some, some higher-than-expected costs. And then in the, the beginning of January, about, you know, let's say, say a month or so ago, I withdrew from that contract. But I, the reason I did that was because I, I didn't want to hold the seller up out of respect to them, and while I continued my due diligence. I've continued the due diligence since that time, and I am still interested in seeking that, that property. I think it would be a benefit to the city of Laconia. My plan would be to, to bring forward twenty new residential units to that building. They would all be one-bedroom units. They would be finished with new kitchens, new baths. The lobby would be updated. All the locking systems would be updated in the building. The property itself lends itself well to a residential structure. It has sixty-six parking spaces on that property. The layout of the building as it stands today actually is conducive to a residential structure despite it being a commercial structure for the past, I think it was built in nineteen seventy. So, for the past, you know, fifty years or so, it's been, it's been operated as a commercial, commercial property. I think one of the difficulties that having it be a commercial property presents is, in the city of Laconia, with this size municipality, it's difficult for commercial entities to move in and be able to afford the necessary rents to, to make that property viable as, as a commercial property. I think that the highest and best use for the property would be to break it down into residential properties. And my intent with this would be really to increase the average quality of the apartments available in the Laconia area. You know, as many of you probably know, the city does, does tend to struggle with, with offering quality residential properties available to, to individuals that may want to, to have a higher quality residence. I think that when I'm done with this project, if, if all the ducks do line up in a row and, and I'm able to be fully prepared and, and get approval here today, and then eventually, you know, hopefully be able to obtain this property, I think that I could renovate it such that we would really be able to offer some nice units to, to young professionals, professionals in the area that, that wanna help make Laconia thrive again. You know, I, I think that by offering more quality apartments in the Laconia area, we can really improve the amount of business that some of the local shops and restaurants and things experience. So, with that said, you know, I wanted to bring that forward to this, to this board, and, you know, try to seek any questions that you may have, and try to clarify any misunderstandings. I know there's been some recent articles in the newspaper that, you know, kind of make it look like I was in the, in the deal and then immediately out of the deal the next day. But the real story is that, you know, I started the due diligence in December, and I haven't been under contract for, like I say, about a month or so now. But with that, during that time, I've continued due diligence, and I just think that if I'm able to obtain approval here, when the time comes, if this property does open up as, as an opportunity, that I'd be able to move forward with it and not kind of go through the timing of, of waiting for, for the meetings. And I think that hopefully my offer to that seller would be a viable one, and, and I'd be able to pursue it.
So, question.
Yes.
Do you have an active contract on the property?
I don't.
Okay. Then I'm not sure that you have the ability to represent, because if I'm correct, the property owners have said they're not seeking this variance or this special exception.
So, before coming forward to you all, I had to seek approval from the seller to be able to present this and bring this proposal forward.
But at that time, you had an active contract.
I did have an acti, active contract at that point.
Apparently, you don't.
I, I don't.
With that being said, I'm not quite sure you could represent.
So, before coming here today, I did confirm with the seller's agent, his name is Rick Hagan, that the, the seller does not have any problems with me pursuing it, and that's also in the most recent article in the newspaper, which was brought forward on Saturday, that the seller does not have any problems with me pursuing it, and that my approval to seek this is, you know, they've signed off on that. This does not harm the seller in any way. In fact, I think that the seller...
Well, it, but the problem here is, it's, what happens is, if you decide not to go through with the contract, and we have already allowed this to pass, if it would pass, then the next person, because it rides with the property, not with the individual, then the next person could turn that into twenty units of anything they wish.
The same thing could...
Because we're not tied to any one certain thing.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying?
Similarly, though, if...
That's why when we usually hear these things, it is with a person who has an active contract, who is, has a clause more than likely in their contract that's saying, "If I get my variance, or if I get my special exception, then I would be willing to purchase the property." Okay? And in this case, it's used as a bargaining chip, more than likely to do something else. Okay, so...
So, I can, I can see, I can see what your point is, and, and my concern is that this would be treated maybe differently than, than if, if I were to have a contract. If I were to have a contract and bring it forward and get this building approved for a twenty-unit complex, and then the contract fell through, that building is approved for a twenty-unit complex, right? Or is that not right?
No. I don't think that's right.
I mean, this is, this is not linked to a person. This is linked to a property.
But generally, and I understand that, but generally, the property owner does a due diligence through a person with an active contract.
Right. So, but I think the facts of this case are that I have approval from the seller, and...
Well, that was when you had a contract.
But I don't think that there's anything that stipulates any different in that contract that says if this contract, if this contract falls through, that this is not be able to brought, be brought forward. There's...
Why can't you, why can't you delay this and see what you're gonna do, if you can pull the financing together and then come back? To me, this is too nebulous. I can't get my hands around giving a, it's like me getting a variance on somebody's house, you know, or, or some building that I have no interest in. You know, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. I understand the concern. So, the reason that I wanted to bring it forward now is because, as you know, there's a thirty-day timeframe for me to, to try to meet the calendar requirements to get in front of you, and then after that, there's a...
Except for any other applicant.
And then, well, I, I realize that, but I, I wanna be as strong as I can possibly be when I present my offer to the seller. And it just so happens that I had already paid to be in front of you and to, to represent my proposal, and, you know, my intention here is, is not to, to cause any kind of a squirrely situation. My intent is to present this to you, and if I obtain approval, to seek the, to seek the property.
Well, generally, and I, I can understand where you're coming from, but normally, the property's agent, if, if it's not under contract, the property's agent would be before us on behalf of his property, saying, "Yes, it's okay to do that." Okay?
So, I had asked the agent to, to consider being present, and they said they weren't sure if they were gonna be able to make it here. Oh, oh, he is. Oh, okay. Hi, Rick. How's it going? So, so Rick is the, is the, is the seller agent, and so he represents the seller, not me. But maybe he's able to confirm that the seller is willing to allow me to continue to stand before you today despite the contract not being in place. It's, this is beneficial to the seller as well. I think if I obtain approval, it, it may even make their property more desirable. I mean, I think this is the highest and best use of this property, and so there's no harm done. You know, other than if you're gonna have somebody come in and, and do something that wouldn't be beneficial to the town, but there's always that risk. I mean, you could have somebody come in, in two months and, and represent like a, a great seller project. You give a twenty-unit approval, and then it doesn't turn out the way that you, the, the way that you had hoped. I'm here before you with good intent to, to bring this forward and, and do the right thing with this property. And the seller's agent, Rick, do you wanna say anything?
Shaw has no problem with Jason doing his due diligence.
Do we have a paper saying that you're the representative of the property owner?
I have my business card.
That's not what's needed. It's that legal documents have to be prepared for us, because if you, please come forward.
Hi, Rick Hagan.
Glad to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Now, what we need is the document that says that Rick Hagan is a representative of the property owner.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have that.
Yeah.
Because we have to be able to legally stand up and say, "Our steps have been followed to the T."
Sure.
Okay?
The article that came out in the Sun last week, the last article that came out, does specify that Maggie Pritchard, who was representative of Lake Region Mental Health, she has no problem with Jason doing his due diligence.
Well, we have a whole course of different people here, because that person is not Sunshine Fisk.
Sunshine Fisk.
Okay, so this is another person. So, we really need to have a chain of paperwork that says who's who and who's given a permission for this property to be reviewed for changes.
So, sir, that, that paperwork has already been submitted, though, and there's no, there's no language in that paperwork that stipulates that if the property's not under contract, that that approval goes away, from what I could see. Do you know that it says that? Does it say it, or does it not say?
A variance, as far as this is done with an outside person, is for people who are under contract to purchase.
But where does it say that?
We will defer this to next month, then, and I'll get a legal opinion.
Okay, yeah, and, and I'm okay with that, and I don't wanna cause any trouble.
And why don't you just defer it to next month and get the correct paperwork, and we will be able to take care of this in the right manner.
Okay. Then I can do that. That's fine. But you, you guys may already have the paperwork, is I guess what I'm saying? So, if you want, if you want, maybe Rob, if, if you're able to take a look at the paperwork that's there, that has the signed approvals, remember?
I have them.
Okay, great. So, let us know, or, and I guess I'll get in touch with Hugh. Let me know what additional paperwork you may need, or maybe if you need Rick's, you know, contract, listing agreement contract, I can get that to you, or...
Was the property owner stipulating that he has the ability to present this?
She didn't stipulate that. She stipulated that I did.
She did, Jason did.
We don't have that.
It's been spinned.
I understand, outside of contract, that you have the ability to present this and make all decisions and conditions based on your presentation.
Okay.
Okay, because a lot, there could be stipulations put down, there could be conditions put down, that if approved, if approved, and that you are now speaking for that property and accepting any conditions therefore set by the board.
Yeah.
Okay?
Sure, no, I understand. I, I understand the concern, too, where it comes from, too. So, I can, I can try to gather that...
That's why we, that's why we have to cover everything, because the property owner could come back and say, "No, that's not what I wanted, and now we have a..."
Yeah.
"...bunch of legal issues."
I understand, yeah. So, what I can do is I can, I can coordinate with, with you all and see if I can get that, whatever paperwork you guys think that I need. And, and also, let me know if there's anything else. I mean, I wanna make sure that when I come before you the next time, that, that, you know, I don't drive up here to...
Sure.
You know, defer again. So, that'd be great, and I appreciate everyone's time.
I thank you for that, and I appreciate your helping us out with this.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Alright.
Thank you.
So, that was moved to next meeting, to be continued, if the appropriate paperwork is presented on who can show this property and who can't, please. And they have to understand that the people that be speaking on behalf of the property, if the variance and the special exception are passed with any conditions and stuff, they are accepting the conditions and stuff that go forth. Okay? Okay, so... Yes?
Bethel, can I ask a couple of questions concerning what just happened?
Not really.
No? I just wanna know if I'm gonna get another notice when the next time, if he presents another hearing, am I gonna get another certified letter? Potter, because I didn't get one about the extension, so...
Next meeting is March fifth.
Thank you.
March fifth?
I'm sorry.
No.
Not March fifth, I'm sorry. March eighteenth.
Thank you.
Chair. Sixteen Leighton has, is here.
Here.
Okay. Okay, I understand, Leighton House, Leighton Ave. is in the house.
I apologize, I was only just, the seven o'clock meeting.
That's quite alright.
We changed it.
Changed it, yeah.
We changed it, and we, we held it open for you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, I am here to represent the Rays at sixteen Leighton Avenue, if you recall a month ago.
Name?
Art Ableman. I live on Leighton Ave. and here to represent the Rays. A month ago, we were both here. Dr. Ray often is unavailable due to his, you know, medical requirements and responsibilities. So, you asked for a more detailed square-footage plot plan of the access, accessory dwelling unit, which I believe you have in front of you. Part of that says exactly where the accessory dwelling unit is and the outline of the bathroom, kitchen, efficiency apartment. And hopefully that meets your needs.
Is this just gonna be one big open space?
Nope, as you see, there's a dividing wall.
No, but I mean, in, in the living space, there's...
In the efficiency...
Bedroom, and everything is all one room? But it doesn't matter to me, I'm just curious. Let you...
The efficiency apartment is one large room, yes.
Just one large room?
Yep. Yep, with the, with a bathroom. Actually twice the size of some of the urban miniature.
Wouldn't the bedroom want walls? I mean, there's gonna be-
It's what, no, it's just a open space for them.
Basic efficiency, yeah.
Wow, wow.
Studio, efficiency.
So when they, um, just to clarify with the, with the city, when they go to get their building permit, they have, like, just, all they've basically done is just said, okay, this is all gonna be storage. Will that be guaranteed that that would be storage when they-
It just left as open space.
I know, but I mean, you can, but it's, it'd be pretty easy, like, in three months to go in there and just start using it for stuff.
You won't see furniture or living accommodations.
No, I just, is there anything that, I guess, we, we're just approving six hundred and twenty-four square feet, is that what we're doing, is that?
That's what it sounds like.
Okay.
Because he satisfied what, uh, was requested.
Right.
Was the, a drawing signifying what they were requesting and they have the plumbing and everything, uh, set up in the living space. You up to speed, Roland?
I'm here. Sorry to wait.
So Mike, uh, Mike, Roland's here, he'll take over.
Very good.
Mike, we're doing Leighton Avenue.
Yes. Unless you wanna sit out and let Michael continue.
I, I can sit out, I-
It's up to you. You're the voting, you're the full member, so-
Well, it's better for you to do it, since I know the Rays.
What's that?
Okay.
All right, that's, that's fair.
He was a little uncomfortable up front, so-
It's already uncomfortable, so you can do it, right, right.
Okay.
It's not, it's, it's not controversial.
You were here for the last meeting.
Right, right, right.
So you're up to speed with everything also, so, um, so the request that, uh, to catch everybody up to speed, this is, uh, the people wanted to build, to finish off the top of their garage. I'm gonna do some paraphrasing and you correct me if I outside of the phrase anywhere. In order for them to redo the inside of their house, they were not gonna touch any of the exterior walls per se. They were just gonna revamp the whole inside of their house, which entailed them to move out and to move into the finished portion of their garage. In order to do that, they needed to come forth and ask for the two special, the variance and a special, no, two special exceptions.
No, a variance and a special exception, there's one of each.
The reason for the need for those is because the garage is a separate building. So the ADU is not attached to the home.
Right.
The ADU is independent of the home, and that's why the need for the variance.
So all they basically need, from what I can see from the drawing, is some basic living accommodations on their property so that they could continue to function on their property, but to have their house remodeled on the interior. My assumption is, and I hate assuming anything, they're gonna pretty much demo the inside and start over again on the-
Yeah, again, the, the, to make sure, just so we can be clear, um, both purposes as a in-law opportunity, as well as for, when the time comes of doing, uh, a complete rehab of the existing structure, um, in the same footprint.
Okay.
It's, it's only, it's, as long as the owner is a participant in the process, that's fine.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any questions?
I think we went over most of them last month, but we, until we got to the, you know, the, you know-
That's what it seems like from when I was reading the minutes.
Right, it was just that the drawing wasn't up to speed.
Wasn't clear. Okay, with that, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public, it's one of those legal things. Anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, uh, bring it back to the board for further questions. If there's no further questions, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, pardon me. Uh, I'm unsure what you were asking earlier, Suzanne, in terms of how we are gonna assure what, I, I'm, I'm not sure what the question is there.
That, once the thing is built in six months, that, that they start expanding into all that storage space, but I guess we can't police it, right, once it's done? If we're, if, but if we specifically say it's a six hundred and twenty-four square foot accessory dwelling unit, with the balance of that, all the space, living space on that floor being stor- used for storage only, but, you know, I don't know how you, it just seems like it's the perfect storm really, because that space is so accessible right there. But I'm not saying, and, you know, I have nothing against this project, and I, you know, and I think it should go through, but I'm just trying to make sure it just, that we are doing it correctly.
At the building pro- uh, permit time, we'll, we'll make a note on the building permit that the, because part of the building permit process is to go through zoning and they will review this based on whatever action the board takes tonight. So we'll put a note on the, on the building permit that it is for the six hundred and whatever square feet it is for the ADU and that the rest re- rest, rest remains as storage.
Right.
And then it becomes an enforceable issue. Now, you, you're correct in that, uh, it's difficult for us to know if, if a violation has occurred, but, uh, y- you would be surprised how many things we do find out about. So, uh, from, from that standpoint, uh, we may or we may not.
No, I'd be comfortable with it. I just wanted to make sure in the city process that everybody was aware that, that there's all this space here, but they're only using half of it.
I got a question for you. Has this been through zoning once before?
Did they need a variance to build that garage on the property?
This might have been done by the previous owner.
That's fine, I still have a question because if it was a variance from a previous owner or not, it's still there. And were there any conditions attached to that?
Yeah.
I, w-.
Is it, do they meet the setbacks? Does the, does the garage meet the setbacks, I wonder?
Yes.
Yes.
If it does, then there probably wasn't a variance, they just got a permit for a garage. The whole variance issue comes here specifically is because it's an undersized lot. And the, and the ADU language specifically says if it's located on an undersized lot and it's a detached building, they need a variance.
The only reason why I was asking for clarification is, I mean, some of these large garages with large unfinished floors, they have put conditions in. And if, and, and variances for doing this stuff go with the property and not the owner, and I wanted to ensure that we're not stepping over conditions that were previously set.
If I can speak to that.
It's buried by a different owner.
If I can speak to that?
Okay.
The original-
They're not facing the footprint of the building.
No, no, that's not, that's not the issue.
The builder of the garage, their intent was to do the exact same thing. So if they had, in my opinion, applied for anything, and this is prior to the ADU timeframe.
Yeah.
None of that was in place, so they simply were gil- building the garage with a potential finished space upstairs, which they never did, but-
So if they didn't need variance, they wouldn't have come, because if they, if they needed a variance-
Well, there was, again, it was, it was back in two thousand and eight, I believe.
Right, but if they had needed a variance, that's when, and if a variance existed, we would've said, you can't put anything upstairs, and that would be the problem here. But if they didn't need a variance, because it was allowed on their property, then there was-
Right, there was no such thing as an accessory dwelling unit at that time.
A garage with storage would have been allowed.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I mean, you, you're, you're correct, the ADU is a rel- relatively recent, uh, innovation in the, in the state laws, but prior to that, zoning boards dealt with what everybody commonly referred to as an in-law apartment. And that was in uncharted territories and approvals were based on whatever approvals were based on at the time. But, um, we, we're not recalling anything in the file concerning, uh, the garage.
It had crossed my mind too, I thought the same thing, yeah.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure we didn't-
We didn't give a variance on top of a variance.
Yeah.
Right. So, any other questions?
I do have a question, and not to step on a bee's nest here. What would it make a difference if it were all an ADU at the top?
You can't, because under the law, it has to be seven hundred, it can't be any bigger than seven hundred and fifty square feet. Unless the main residence is three thousand square feet, in that case, it could be twenty-five percent of three thousand, but the main residence does not fit that condition right now. So they're limited to seven hundred and fifty, and the previous drawing had well over a thousand square feet last month when they came.
Although seven hundred and fifty is twenty-five percent of three thousand.
Yes, yes.
What? But, no, the main ha-
She meant more than three thousand, but anyway. Gotcha.
Okay.
If it was a four thousand square foot house, you'd get a thousand foot ADU.
Thank you.
Yes, right, okay. So anyway, that's where we are, but anyway.
Any other questions? Closing comments?
No, appreciate your, uh, willingness to take it on.
Okay, uh, what we're gonna do, we're gonna vote on both of them individually.
Right.
Okay, um, so you may go ahead and have a seat, we're gonna close it to the public, bring it to the discussion. The first one will be-
Who did the variance first, when is the variance?
The variance is first. Okay. So do we-
So do you want, are you, are we still in discussion?
We can be in discussion, or we can make a motion.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna-
If there's no discussion needed, necessary.
Yeah.
Okay, entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve, um, application thirty-one, I guess, variance, uh, for the, um, for sixteen Leighton Ave. For any of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest and, uh, the spirit of the ordinance, uh, is observed. In this case, there, um, the building already exists, uh, on the lot, they're not changing the size of the structure or having any effect, um, on the lot, um, the, um, um, yeah, like I said, the structure already exists, um, so there's no, uh, substantial change in the use being proposed, and therefore, there's no, um, detriment to the, to the general public. It doesn't threaten the public health, safety, or welfare of the, uh, of the neighborhood. Um, it does substantial justice. Again, um, this use is consistent with the area's current use and character, and, um, it again does no harm to the abutters, values of surrounding properties would not be diminished. This would have no direct effect on surrounding adjacent properties, and there are several other properties in the area that, uh, have similar, uh, garage structures located on their properties. Their, uh, special conditions, uh, for the hardship is that the lot, um, already, uh, exists, it's existed for quite some time, and it's been permitted for a home and a garage, and, uh, so there's no way to increase the size of the lot to make it conforming. So, um, there's no way to have the required acreage, and so that's the, uh, uh, that's the, um, the hardship. And, um, certainly, the proposed use is a reasonable one, and it is allowed by special exception in this zone.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I would suggest to the board that you place a condition on the variance that it's only, uh, viable if the special exception is obtained, just, just in case.
Okay, so we can, uh, can you add that, Karen, please?
Yep.
And my motion stands with that amendment.
Okay, so with that being said, any other discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion? It passes, the variance passes? All right, now for the special exception? Do we need a motion?
I think a motion to approve the, uh, special, uh, application thirty-two for special exception for sixteen Leighton Avenue. The requested use is specifically authorized in this chapter. It's just received variance for a separate detached, for the ADU and a separate detached structure. The requested use will not condo- uh, create any undue traffic or congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, and that the garage structure already exists, um, and is located on a single-family lot in the, uh, our, our neighborhood. Uh, there would be no additional vehicles, uh, with this particular request and would therefore result in no additional traffic congestion or pedestrian hazards. There would be no, uh, increase in demand on public or water or sewer, since there's none servicing the property. Uh, it doesn't change drainage or storm runoff, there are no changes to the existing dwellings and footprint, only to the in- to six, six hundred and twenty-four square feet of the interiors, so that it will be in compliance with the ADU usage criteria. All special provisions, uh, as required to set forth in the chapter will be fulfilled uh, in that the variance which was needed because of, uh, the, um, substandard lot size has been granted. There's no, um, hazard to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. It's, uh, the use is not detrimental or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. The proposed location is appropriate for the special exception use being applied for, and the requested use is in compliance with the spirit and intent of the chapter and the master plan.
Just be sure that the six hundred and twenty-four square feet is in there.
I did say, I did, uh, but I'll reaffirm that, it, the, uh, size of the variance granted was for six hundred and twenty-four square feet only.
Special exception.
And the se- and the special exception is for six hundred and twenty-four square feet only of, uh, for an efficiency apartment to be created in that, that one section of the existing garage.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second discussion? Any other conditions from, nope, there being none, all those in favor? It all passes, sir. Have a good night, and thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I saw it on the way over, incredible. It was huge.
You thought you missed something.
What did I do?
Absolutely, I'm there all day.
Have a nice evening. Good night.
Okay.
What happened?
Everybody got pu- put aside.
I walked through the door and everybody was walking out, it's what's going on here?
Everybody got continued or went away.
All right.
What about the guy on one forty-five, uh, Union Ave?
He was withdrawn.
Application. Is he not gonna, what's he gonna, is it withdrawn, like, does that mean it's not coming back to us?
If he does a voluntary lot merger, his lot meets density requirements.
Then he won't need it.
Then he doesn't need any variance.
Oh, well, that's a smart move.
Makes sense.
So.
Well, it's one-
It is, except for then he doesn't have, he can't sell independently, he has to sell.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Everything together, but, so that's the choice to be made.
Uh, uh, you know, in, in terms of what his goal is, that would work for him, so, that makes it easier on us.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna say it would be an easement for him.
The last thing before us tonight is the election of officers.
I would like to nominate Steve Bogart as chairman of the ZBA for the upcoming year.
I'll second that.
Anybody else?
Wanna be chairman?
How do I become a regular member?
You will soon.
Okay, all, all those in favor of Steve being the chairman? Obviously, I'm a little bit for myself, so, okay, now, vice chair, I'd like to nominate Suzanne, and slash secretary, unless someone else wants to jump up on that table for secretary. No, then, uh, vice chair slash- No, then, uh, vice chair slash secretary.
And I'd like to second that.
Anybody else? All those in favor of Suzanne being the, the vice chair slash secretary? Okay. My condolences.
How did I get to work with you?
I guess, any other questions before the board? Any other business?
So, did, uh, so, um, Okeechobee Street didn't appeal?
Not yet, I think they have another day or two.
Is the city making any progress with what they wanna do, or are they doing anything?
Uh, we're working with the legislature through the New Hampshire Municipal Association at the moment.
Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
Been out of here this early before.